Call me, Dore. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to welcome you to a meeting, a formal meeting, of the Board of Commissioners of Yumitilla County. This is a meeting that is accessible to the public, even though there are certain other restrictions in place. But a record is being kept of the meeting, both visually and in writing. So we'll begin with awards, recognition, and correspondence. Commissioner Schaefer.
Do you have another challenge claim recipient? This one is Colton Lawrence from Public Health. And this letter is from Joe Fiamara, the director. And since the beginning of the COVID-19 pandemic, Colton has coordinated our wraparound services for any individual who has been asked to isolate or quarantine. He has done a fantastic job keeping these needed services moving smoothly, including all coordination with partner community business organizations. On July 30th, Colton once again showed his passion for this work going above and beyond. An individual needed a hotel room in Pendleton. After we provided one, they made some poor choices that resulted in being kicked out. With no hotel available for someone who needed to isolate and a heat wave coming over the weekend, Colton found a way. After finding a backpack and some bottles of water and food for the individual, Colton was able to coordinate with a local group in Hermiston who was willing to transport, feed, and house this individual until isolation ended. This was above and beyond any requirements or expectations, yet Colton never hesitates. Thank you, Colton.
Commissioner Doran, do you have any comments you'd like to make under this category?
I really do. I'd like to thank the Yumitilla County Fair Board, Angie McNally, the manager, and staff for an incredible 2021 Yumitilla County Fair. Several headwinds, not to go into detail, but they overcame them all without any type of objections or hesitation. And I thought it was one of the more enjoyable fairs that I can remember. And I just, the teamwork was incredible. I thought that they worked together very well and put on a great show. It's a heck of an event that we're doing. So thank you to the Yumitilla County Fair Board, Angie McNally and her staff. But really, you still need to recognize the hundreds and hundreds of volunteers that helped put on the Yumitilla County Fair.
I missed another call this morning because I got a call from Marie Lanell, who's in charge of the sale, so that we can wrap that up. And I don't know that we're quite ready to announce the final outcome, but we went through the gyrations that are necessary to make it come out the way that we want it to. And I can tell you that the increase is staggering.
It is.
Absolutely staggering from what it has been in the past. So, all right. We have minutes of two previous meetings, August 4th and August 11th.
Move for approval of the minutes from August 4th and August 11th as presented.
Second.
Honored members, say aye.
Aye.
Do we have additions to the agenda?
Not really. There is one item that is not on your printed agenda, but it is on the electronic one. And it's number nine, the financial HR software.
Okay. Anything else? All right, we will go into hearing mode relative to the.
Wait a minute, I think we skipped public input.
Oh, is there any public input from anybody who is not on the agenda? Thank you, Commissioner Schaefer. All right. We'll go into hearing mode. This is a land use hearing. Ladies and gentlemen, I call this land use hearing before the Yumitilla County Board of Commissioners to order. My name is George Murdock. I am the chairman of the Yumitilla County Board of Commissioners. Our role today is to conduct a public hearing concerning the city of Yumitilla's request for the county to co-adopt a proposed change to the city's urban growth boundary. The proposed change would add 150 acres of land to the UGB, which would then be rezoned from exclusive farm use to city light industrial and subsequently annexed into the city. The property is identified as map 5N 28C Tax Lots 146601. The criteria of approval are found in the Yumitilla County Development Code, sections 152.750-152 755, and the joint management agreement between the city and the county. I'll begin the hearing by asking staff to summarize the application. I will then ask the applicant to testify, followed by those in favor of the application. Then any person in opposition or who have questions or concerns will also have a chance to speak. If there is opposition or questions, staff may respond to them. The commissioners also may ask the staff and witness questions throughout the hearing until the record closes. Any person with an interest in today's agenda may offer relevant oral and/or written testimony, but please only speak when I identify you for that purpose. When you testify, please begin by clearly stating your name and address. If you represent someone else, please say so. If you have any exhibits you want to consider, such as a copy of your testimony, photographs, petitions, or other documents or physical evidence, please provide it to me or the staff. It will be marked as part of the record. So staff, you're up first.
Thank you, Commissioners. This is Amy, the Yumitilla County Commissioner. The request before you this morning is a request to co-adopt this Yumitilla's UGB expansion. Alan Cleaver, who is the current property owner in the city of Yumitilla, are wanting the Yumitilla County to co-adopt this expansion request. The properties proposed to inclusion in the UGB are known as Tax Lot 2500 on a subject map 5N 28 and Tax Lot 200 on a subject map 5N 2832. Note, these are different than what Sharon just read. This is because of the change in property revenue mapping standards. So they are firmly known as Tax Lot 146601 on a subject map 5N 28C. The property is generally located south of the city of Yumitilla in East Powerline Road. The maps included in your packets are the same maps that were included in the planning commission's recommendations. So the map numbers don't correlate with what's in the memo packet, but they are the same properties. The city of Yumitilla has been working with Mr. Cleaver on this request for over a year now. Last fall, the Department of Land Management Development shared with the city several of the purchase transfers with this request. These are detailed in the letter dated October 19th, 2020. The city then reported the supplemental findings in conclusions, and DLCD provided additional feedback on July 20th, 2021. After the city provided their supplemental findings and conclusions, GLCD's concerns have been eliminated and only minor changes were asked to be made in the city's filings. The criteria of approval for amendments are found in the Yumitilla County Development Code, sections 152.750-152.755. In accordance with the joint management agreement between Yumitilla County and the city of Yumitilla, the county is required to co-adopt any amendments to the UGB. Therefore, the county has the authority to consider and approve the compromise for plan maps and zoning map amendments. The planning commission's recommendation to the Board of Commissioners is based on substantial factual evidence in the record. The first county hearing on the Cleaver request is before the county planning commission on July 22nd, 2021. The Yumitilla County Planning Commission at the July 22nd hearing voted unanimously on the recommendation of approval to co-adopt the UGB expansion act amendment. There are several attachments included in your packets. These include the findings and conclusions and support of the Cleaver UGB to adoption request. These are the findings and conclusions that the county planning commissioners adopted in their approval recommendation to the Board of Commissioners. The Board of Commissioners may bring with the planning commission's approval recommendation and approve the co-adoption, deny the co-adoption, or a postponed decision and continue the hearing. The final local decision made by the Board of Commissioners must be based on substantial factual evidence in the record. This concludes this staff report. Thank you.
Okay, before we move on, let me go back on another procedural matter to ask if there's, as we debate this and consider this matter, are there any abstentions, bias, conflict of interest, declaration of ex parte contact, and objections to jurisdiction?
None for mine.
All right. Others who wish to speak on behalf of this matter, in favor of this matter?
Looks like Carla McLean has a raised hand.
Thank you, Commissioners, for hearing this matter. My name is Carla McLean. For the record, my address is 170 Van Buren Drive, Yumitilla, Oregon. I represent the applicant, Alan Cleaver, in Cleaver Farms. I'm not gonna, you have a packet in front of you. I'm just gonna do, take a short moment here to kind of summarize what the applicant's objective has been since the start of this process, but share where we are and what the intended conclusions are. So the applicant has made three applications to the city of Yumitilla. One of them being this UGB expansion, which does require co-adoption by the county. There was also an application for a zone change for a portion of land. And then there's a request for an annexation. And those have been working through the city process and now through the county process over the past little over, little over a year. We've been, well, we've been working on this longer than that, but in the process for about a year now. So the final intent of this process is to have about 450 acres that will be zoned for industrial purposes at the south edge or south end of Yumitilla, the city of Yumitilla, on the south hill along Powerline Road. The property, as you can see from the maps, is between Powerline Road and the freeway, Interstate 82, and it's just north of the Powerline Road interchange. To get to this point, the UGB expansion is about 150 acres. There's two parcels that are both around 75 acres. And then, or two portions of parcels, parcels, I should say. And then there, those would come into the UGB with a zoning, an industrial zoning designation. And then there's about 300 acres that's part of the zone change that would be changed or rezoned from a rural residential zoning to a industrial zoning as well. And then again, at the conclusion of this, the applicant has also asked for an annexation to bring all of this land into the city limits. The city of Yumitilla has been going through a lengthy process. They started, I can't remember if it was 2018 or 19. Brandon will be able to confirm that when he speaks. But the city started with an economic opportunities analysis, and they have been working to update their goal line. And that process is concluding, I believe it may have concluded. The city council did adopt that here in the last several weeks. So the city is operating under a new economic opportunities analysis. Why I bring that up and why it's important is because it very clearly identifies the city has a need for large lot industrial properties. And this application specifically with a conclusion of about 450 acres of available industrial land will meet that need. So the economic opportunities analysis said that the city needed two large lots, something, oh, 100 acres or more, and then two lots between 50 and 99.9 acres. Some of the land in the 450 acres, if you've driven Interstate 82 at any point in time, you know that if you drive between Powerline Road towards Yumitilla going north, you'll notice when you look to the west that there is some sloping. There's farm fields up at the top, and there's some sloping. So some of the property is not adequately developable because of slope. So there's, the net is not a total of 450 acres of truly developable land, but it's all included in there. The city went through a pretty extensive process, working with the applicant to assure that a variety of things could be met for this. Utilities were examined, road capacity was examined. So there was a number of things that were looked at. I'm happy to answer any questions specifically to the application. But I think, Commissioners, you were fairly well first in what the city has been working on, what the objective of this is. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. But I think that's a good summary without getting into the details. So I will conclude at that point. Thank you very much for your consideration and your time today.
Others who wish to speak in favor of the application?
Senator Brandon, raise your hand.
Brandon, you have your hand up?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just before I get started, can everybody hear me okay?
Yep.
Yep, okay. So my name is Brandon Snipes. I'm the community development director for the city of Yumitilla. Thank you very much for the opportunity to present this testimony today. Carla did an excellent job kind of outlining the overall process in the city's hopeful conclusion, which is a four-part application, which would rezone over this approximately 450 acres to light industrial adding about 150 acres into the urban growth boundary. And assuming the commission approves this or the board of commissioners approves this application, we will follow up with the already submitted annexation application to bring that in. The city council did approve the city's portion of this application on July 20th at their regular city council meeting. And we're bringing ordinance just for adoption at their September 7th city council meeting. Just to do a very high level analysis, the city put a ton of time and resources into developing the supplemental findings, which are contained within your packet. Ultimately, in DLCD's first comment letter, there raised two primary issues. One was the city's position to consider the 160-acre parcel out of the pork industrial site as developed. The second was to add additional analysis on the city's site selection criteria, which primarily are outlined in administrative rules 66024, 50 and 660240067. So they were the kind of high-level brush here for a moment. Looking at alternative sites within the urban growth boundary or the study area, which is generally a half-mile buffer set up around the outside of the city's urban growth boundary, we see three overwhelmingly consistent development patterns. One is we do have a pretty significant inventory of vacant industrial, vacant land, but that is primarily held in federal ownership. We have the distinct privilege of having five different federal ownerships between US Army Corps, BPA, Bureau of Rec, Bureau of Indian Affairs, as well as BLM. So those properties are just outright considered not suitable alternative locations by operation of federal law. The one site that I do want to specifically highlight is known as the Wanaka industrial site. It is currently zoned industrial and is located outside the urban growth boundary. That property is owned by the tribes. And it is the state's position that while we have adopted goal leveling sections and have agreements in place to provide utility services to that property, it is not reasonable for the city to put its economic development aids in a property that need have absolutely no regulatory control over. While the tribes currently have the property designated as industrial, their priorities could change, and the city would have no way to assure that that property would remain in industrial use or available for industrial development. So that site was excluded. Kind of sticking in the area, we also have the Wanakit wildlife area. That's a very significant wetlands and wildlife area that's maintained by the tribe. It includes federal BPA easements for mitigations related to the dam. There are, the other pattern that you see is there are several areas kind of scattered throughout the city, primarily along Coney Lane. And then as you're headed west out of town along Highway 730, kind of in between Yumitilla and here again, you see rural residential properties that are developed with a pretty typical rural residential pattern. Most of them have been subdivided to at or near the minimum lot size, somewhere between, you know, four to six acres. And most of them are developed with existing buildings. The city excluded those areas from consideration, and it's simply not feasible for the city to have to approach 30-plus property owners to be able to come up with one suitable large lot industrial site. The last kind of category that the lands fall into are farmland lands. OAR 66024067 establishes what the state calls the priority list. So there are four different priorities for inclusion that you have to follow in the rules. Priority one is non-resourced lands, as I just addressed. The couple of industrial sites that we have or the residential areas that would be considered non-resources are simply not suitable. Category two is what is called marginal lands. Most eastern Oregon counties and Yumitilla County Pacific hasn't adopted marginal land standards, so that criteria is not really applicable. Category three and four are really resource lands, so farmer forest lands that are either non-high value or high value. Ultimately, around the city, all of the resource lands that surround the UGB are considered high value. There's three properties specifically identified. One is the East 395 properties. Those are considered high value because they have outright class-two soils. The way the administrative rules in Division 64 work is you have to exclude the highest classification of soils first. So that being the only area within the study area that is class-two soils, we had to exclude that. The other two sites are the Cleaver property, which is what we are considering today, and the Topaz land properties. Both of those have very similar development patterns, where you have a large irrigated, center of drought irrigation with kind of the remaining skyline, if you will, in between. Though all of the areas where there are irrigation water rights are considered high-value farmland by state statute. Ultimately, what that means from a state's perspective is there is not a alternative location that is not considered high-value farmland. It is the city's position that the Cleaver land property is a best alternative as approximately, you know, 300 of those acres are already located within the city limits, even though they are still currently being farmed by state statute, they are not considered high-value farmland. So the way the state statutes end up working out, even though they're both currently in crop development, those, those 300 acres do not count as high-value farmlands, given they are already included within city limits and the urban growth boundary. That really leaves the Cleaver land property as the only alternative location. I'd be happy to answer any questions if the commission has questions on specific properties. But as I mentioned, the supplemental findings go through that site selection criteria pretty detailed.
Questions?
Well, if this planning thing doesn't work out for you, Brandon, there's a career for you as an auctioneer, so.
I get going a little fast. I apologize.
I did see a message pop up. I think it was from Mr. Williams, and I couldn't quite read it fast enough before it went away. Could somebody, whoever's running that, could they click on the message for me, please?
Yeah.
Bottom right, to the right. Keep going to the right. Keep going right.
Keep going.
Yep, 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 almost there. Keep going, one more, one more, right there.
There you go.
Okay, so he's, he must be the attorney for Cleaver Land.
He's not an attorney. He's their manager.
Oh, okay.
He's also on the screen if you'd like to speak. Steve, do you want to say something to us or just have us read your message?
Good morning. I just want to let you know that I'm here. I don't know how to change my name on the Google Meet screen. I'm so used to Zoom meetings that I can change it in a blink of an eye there. But I just want to let you know I am here. Yes, I work for Alan Cleaver. I'm up to him today and available to answer some questions if there are some specific questions that Carla and Brandon have already addressed.
For our recorded record, would you please state your name, address, and position?
Certainly. Steve Williams, 205 Southeast Crestline Drive in Hermiston. I am the project manager for Cleaver Farming Group, which includes Cleaver Land.
Thank you. All right, anybody else who wishes to speak in favor of this application? All right, are there any individuals who would like to speak in opposition or who have questions or concerns that would like to speak?
So are we up to, can we talk now or is there, you're still?
Well, you may ask questions to those people, but if there's nobody else wishes to speak, I will take us out of hearing mode.
What?
All right, we'll go out of hearing mode.
I just wanted to mention that I was at the Yumitilla City Council meeting when this was presented, and I got to see from their perspective the work that went into this. And Brandon did a good job on this, a lot of hard work on that. Congrats.
Thank you very much.
I was trying to get a bit in, Brandon, but I couldn't. All right, Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Well, I would make a motion that we adopt ordinance number 2021-07.
Can we do that? Second.
Okay, further discussion. Honored members, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, passed unanimously. All right, thank you all for being with us this morning.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Item number two, community justice grant application. I see several individuals on there. I don't know who's going to speak.
Is this a biennial plan or is this the justice reinvestment grant application?
Grant application.
I think that one's market. That's the JRI grant today.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mark Ryle, I'm the Yumitilla County Hispanic Coordinator. That's local public safety coordinating council. Question here today is also Susan McCandry, who is the fairperson for the LIPSEC. And what we have before you today is an ongoing application. This is now Yumitilla County's third cycle on this particular grant, which is the justice reinvestment grant. The goals remain the same for this particular grant. The intent is to reduce prison population in the state of Oregon. In addition, reduce recidivism, mobility, and reinsurance of community, holding individuals accountable, and thus enhancing public safety. In addition, this particular cycle, they've added equity and inclusion that would target the underserved population. So there, you'll find that that's due for this particular application. Our award, which we are available for, has grown somewhat over the past biennium. It's not a large amount of money, but we do end up with an award amount of $1,119,272. That's largely due to the fact that the community justice department maintained a workload or increased what now is available as a workload for the state of Oregon. In other words, the county population grew somewhat as far as it relates to workload. And that workload is specific to community correction. So they use the same formula for that particular fee. As a result, we get an increase in funding. I won't cover every program specific, but I will kind of just give you an oversight. We have four identified programs that we want to fund, one of which actually doesn't require any funds for this particular grant. And they remain consistent for the past cycle in these categories. So we have jail treatment, that'll be a funded program, jail management program, and a new one that would be called the care program for the purposes of this grant. The last priority is the downward hardship program that is administered by our district attorney's office and requires no funding. Of all of these grants, there are five funded positions. And then there's small amounts for equipment, office supplies, and curriculum. So for the total award amount of $973,592, the additional funds, as you may have referenced, the total package, 3% of that total goes to evaluation and 10% goes to victim services. So there are two categories for that. That's one of them new this year. Well, not actually, which I think initiated in last year's cycle about halfway through. And that is the domestic violence services and the guardian care centers. So those are the two entities that make up victim services. I think that covers it in a nutshell. It does require a letter of support, and I think your county council has prepared that for your sake. And that's what we'll need to solidify this grant.
It appears to me from looking through this that you've taken a somewhat different approach to, I guess we'd call it, for lack of a better term, a more holistic approach into not just dealing with the individual, but you're incorporating, it appears to be more services for the offender's family. Could you speak to that?
I think that's correct. When we talk about specifically the care program, that encompasses a larger group of people. One of the focus areas that we'll have in that program is women and children. And so there'll be some services identified for the families of those women that are under supervision of community correction.
Mr. Chair, I'd move a two.
Wait before you do that. Mr. Primber, do you want to add anything to that?
Well, I think the concept for us all going into this biennium, when we really start looking at underserved populations and equity.
looking at underserved populations and equity and doing what we can do in a rural county to get people tied up to specific services that meet each individual and their unique needs, we're a little challenged, you know? We're not Multnomah County that has, you know, the resource base to have individual specialized programs for every group that the CJC considers to be underserved. So we have to look at these things in a more holistic kind of way, and that's where we're coming up with the care program, is not just women with children, but individuals that might have other unique needs that just the general service delivery may not be the best for. So a referral can go to some system navigators that can meet with each individual, do a needs assessment on them based on their individual unique circumstance, and then aid the PO in making the best referral to where that person might go for the resources they need. I think another thing coming into it from our point of view is it's difficult for people to focus on compliance, on supervision. If you don't know where your kids are going to sleep at night, you don't know where your next meal is coming from, if you don't have your basic needs met, are you going to have much concern really over the directives a PO might be giving you? So our feeling really is we need to take much more of a wraparound view to stabilize people while at the same time we work on those issues that might cause them into the criminal justice system. So that's the goal. I mean, the grant allows for two positions, so it's going to be one working out of the Hermiston office and one out of the Pendleton office. Reality of it is, the need is probably double that, but this will get us started and allow us to start putting the framework of a program together, and we'll see what the future takes us.
So am I safe in assuming, in addition to women with children, that you obviously have offenders, male offenders, who have children that somehow will come under the oversight of this program?
Yeah, so it could be male offenders. It could be Native Americans, and we want to make sure they're fully tied up with the Elbow Rock and the services that are available to the tribe. It might be individuals where English isn't their first language, and we need system navigators to find the best resource for that particular individual. It's not just women with children. I know that that's kind of the lane that care has traditionally worked in, so this will continue to do that, but it will probably also expand that lane a bit for them as well.
Thank you. I wanted to, I assumed that was where you were going, but I wanted to make it a matter of record, so.
Yeah, and we're doing things internally within our community corrections office, too, by running gender-specific caseloads, and we've got Spanish-speaking POs that we align with those folks where English might not be their first language. So, you know, we're doing things outside of this grant to meet these needs as well.
Thank you. Commissioners, that's my, end of my questions, comments?
I would make a motion that we approve the grant application and authorize Chair to sign a letter of support.
Second, with a couple of comments. One, Mark, I'm not sure, but a million dollars is a lot of money. I'm not sure it's a small amount, so that's a nice award, so. Second, I'd like to thank Susan and the Lipstick Committee for all their hard work and dedication to this program and moving it forward as well and as smoothly as they have. So thank you, Susan, for attending the meeting and being an active member of the Lipstick Committee.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right, thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Community Corrections Biennial Plan.
So that one is me. Commissioner Dorn and Schaefer, this might be the first one of these that I, that you guys have been a part of. So I'll give a little bit of history. Dating back to 1995, the Oregon Legislature passed Senate Bill 1145. Senate Bill 1145 transferred the authority to supervise both parole and probation of offenders in the community. That service can be delivered by the county and funded by the state of Oregon. So with that, every biennium, the community corrections agency, along with the Lipstick and the board of commissioners, submit a biennial plan to the Department of Corrections for review and approval of the intergovernmental agreement that allows for the transfer of funds from the state of Oregon to the county. The way we're funded is similar to other programs that the county might manage that has a general capitation, meaning there are roughly 30,000 people on supervision in the state of Oregon. Umatilla County supervises roughly 750 of those. You do the math, you divide one member into the other, you get your share of the supervised population. Last biennium, our share of that total population was 2.3%. So if you had a statewide budget of 268 million, you could multiply .023 into that number and become within, oh, a few dollars of where your general allocation will be. This last year or so, with all things COVID and counties working from home, you might imagine that the number of people being supervised fell. It fell for two reasons. The courts weren't as active, and the community corrections offices working from home probably weren't supervising people at the same level, which then allowed people to expire earlier than they might have otherwise, and the result was the total population fell. So the governor's proposed budget came in at $234 million. That's, you heard what I said a minute ago, we were 2.3% of 268 last biennium. We came in at 234 this time, but because of the work we did, Mark alluded to it earlier, that our allocation share of the JRI budget increased. That increased because of the work that we did at community corrections to continue to supervise people. Even though there was COVID, we still did certain things to maintain contact, maintain expectations, to continue to hold people accountable, to continue to do the work that we're charged with doing. So the result of it was, as well as our partners around us fell in population, we did not. And because we did not, our share of the budget grew. Everybody, you know, so it's a pizza, and our size of the pizza just became a bit better because we didn't lose as much as others did. Then throughout the legislative process, there was a number of things that brought some money back into the community corrections budget, ultimately bringing it up to 284 million. By the time that the legislative section, there were some bills that brought in some newly funded positions. There was some cost study money that was, that didn't pass last biennium because of the, all the walkouts and the lack of a quorum and things like that. So some of those things carry over, the result of which our budget grew this biennium by about $1.2 million because of, one, the total number was up, and our share of that total number was up. Now, there are some subtractions that came with that. Now, the legislature passed Senate Bill 620 that removes our ability to charge local fees for people being on supervision. Their VOS fees are a barrier for people being on supervision. Those monies will eventually get turned over to the Department of Revenue if they don't pay them. They might get turned into collections. So they put some money into the overall budget to offset that loss. For us, as a county that was fairly vigorous in fee collections, by losing those fees, we lose a couple hundred thousand dollars a year. So when you take the $1.3 million growth, you take out the supervision fee loss, while we grew in budget, it only grew us marginally in terms of the opportunity to do new things. By the time you pay for increased personnel costs and you fill a couple empty positions that I was sitting on, we really come out fairly close to status quo. So that's really what you'll see in the biennial plan in front of you. There are some new programs, but most of those were just covered under the justice reinvestment conversation. Otherwise, most of the changes internally are just around just the mechanisms of how we deliver services. The overall programs and staffing and those kinds of things we're delivering are relatively unchanged. I presented this plan to Lipstick last Tuesday, last week, and had the same discussion. It was approved. So the last step in this process for me is today and to, like Mark, receive a letter of support for the biennial plan that I can submit to Department of Corrections and ultimately begin receiving this biennium's funding from the Department of Corrections.
Questions?
While your, the description of the plan is very, very concise, it does lose a little flair without the blackboard. Just going to throw that out there.
I know you and George love my brainstorming exercises on the blackboard. I know Susan does as well. You know, I know that not everybody thinks the way that I do. Thank God for that. But yeah, me slapping numbers and programs and services and charting them across a big space, that allows me to kind of visualize the flow of how things work. So while it doesn't work for everybody, it does for me.
Mr. Chair, I would move approval of the 2021 to 2023 Community Corrections Plan and authorize Chair to sign a letter of acceptance and support.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Did you vote Commissioner Dorn?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, item four, CDDP payable, Mrs. Beck. I like saying that.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Kim Giff, Umatilla County Developmental Disabilities Program Manager. I'm here to request that we will be signed for $14,466.30 for our FARA electronic record system. This is the annual fee that we pay in order to do business with our department.
Questions?
I have none.
Have a motion?
Chair, we approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Item number five, Veteran Services Lease. I believe that's you, Commissioner Schaefer, is it not?
Yeah, I think it is, too. So with the assumption that the substance abuse program by CCS and Department of Reorganization, a new Pendleton office for veteran services is planned. A site at the Banner Bank building has been identified and is available for lease beginning October 1st. We're seeking approval for the new site at lease to put veterans out above Banner Bank. The rent is $300 a month for a very nice office space there. And with that, Mr. Chair, I'd move approval for the lease for veteran service and authorize Chair to sign the lease.
Second, the motion. Quick question, John, or Commissioner Schaefer, is that a 24-hour access?
I think, Ken, do they do online access 24/7?
No, I'm at the building.
Oh, the building, no.
Okay, any other questions, comments? I applaud you for finding a space appropriate for those who served.
It's actually a beautiful place. I was quite, I thought for sure it was going to be significantly more, so.
Yeah, they certainly don't need to go to a basement or some other place where they're historically gone, so I appreciate that. Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Item number six, the City of Stanfield Funding Request.
Good morning, commissioners. Tom Bell, Umatilla County Public Works Director. The City of Stanfield is requesting some bicycle path funding from the public works. What this funding will go for, as you probably have noticed, ODOT has a, excuse me, a project on Highway 395 that runs through Stanfield and towards Hermiston. The Stanfield piece of that has some curb sidewalk and some other features that are included in that for pedestrian travel, some bulbous for, to make it safer crossing intersections and things. The City of Stanfield actually wants to add on to that project with some pedestrian lighting. There was no, there wasn't any accommodation in the ODOT project for lighting, and the cost, estimated total cost of the additional lighting that Stanfield would like to do is $130,000. Through some conversation, it was determined that $93,000 from the county would be an adequate amount, I believe, to help get them over the top to their goal.
Thanks, Tom. I would move for adoption of Order RD 2021-04.
I would second that, but I just want to, I know the answer to this, but I want to make sure that the public knows that these are not general fund dollars. Could you kind of touch on that for a second, Tom?
Yeah, the Public Works Department, our maintenance program is funded through state highway fund dollars, and that's gas tax, vehicle registration, weight mile tax, and there are a few other things thrown in there. By statute, 1% of the county's portion of those state highway fund dollars is required to go into what they refer to as bicycle path funds, and these funds have to meet specific criteria as to how they are spent. And it's not just bike path, it is bike, pedestrian, and it's a little broader than that, but primarily that's what those funds are. We can't expend that 1% of those state highway fund dollars on anything other than bicycle pedestrian path features.
Thank you.
Did I get a motion?
Yep.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Item seven, Bridge Engineering Contribution.
I can handle that one if you want, or Tom?
Tom, you're Commissioner Dorn.
I'm going to default to Commissioner Dorn on that one.
Perfect. Thanks, Tom. This is a $50,000 contribution to a total cost of $135,000. What this is, is a partnership with the City of Umatilla, the City of Hermiston, and Umatilla County to identify which would be the preferred route for the extension of the additional interchange on I-82. The two, the two options at this point are Pumpkin Center Extension over to I-82 and Elm Street Extension over to the power line, power line road interchange exit area. The work that'll be done will be an assessment of both of those options with a recommendation to come back from Anderson Perry on which one would be the preferred route to achieve that additional interchange. After the last census report, this is very timely, probably should have been done quite a while ago, but it is in the lap now to be, to move forward. So I would move for approval of payment, $50,000, the City of Hermiston towards a total cost of $130,000 for work with Anderson Perry on a preliminary report for the new Umatilla River crossing and interchange on I-82. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Item number eight, Access Control System Upgrade.
Good morning, commissioners. Jan and I, Director of Administrative Services. And before you, there is a request to replace the control access system out at the sheriff's office in the administrative portion, but really not the jail system down below. The, similar, about a little over a year ago, we replaced the systems here at the courthouse and Stafford Council. At that time, we did not replace the drains and controlling portion at the sheriff's office. Instead, we added multiple doors, because they needed the additional doors, that was more important at the time. And then we put in for the next budget year, the cost in our plan to replace the system, the drains of our system there. So it all works together, and so that is why we are so sourcing down with Unitec Electronics. The total cost to replace that out there at the sheriff's office is $39,433.92. Any questions or?
So I heard correctly, this has nothing to do with the jail renovation project?
Correct. This is only for the administrative system. This is only for the administrative systems up above. This has nothing to do with the down below parking system.
Perfect.
Quick question, Dan, just being the new guy. My fob works over there now, but it's not part of their system, is that correct?
They put it in over there, too. We do a, and it's going to be similar that way because they like to make sure they have their control over theirs, but they do kind of work together and stuff, and it's easier, of course, to support the one system, but they won't have administrative rights to do tracking and controlling who they can allow in and out of filthy, so they'll do some of the work themselves there. And so Laura will put your fob in, app so you can get access, if that's what the sheriff wants, maybe he doesn't.
There we go.
But yes, the same fob will be accessible like it is now.
Gotcha. All righty, thanks, Kim. I move for adoption of order DCC 2021-069.
Second. All right, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, item nine, Coordinated COVID Response. I'll read this because, what? Did it slip in ahead of that?
Yep.
Yes, and Riley's going to talk, Mr. Ward, we'll talk on that.
Okay. Go ahead, Riley.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Riley, working as Project Manager for the finance HR software project. After careful consideration of each of the proposals submitted, we had four proposals submitted, one from Casell, one from Dude Solutions, that was a facilities management-only proposal, one from Tyler Technologies, and one from UKG that was a payroll-only proposal. And the costs are identified on the piece of paper there. The initial cost, we have it broken down into the initial cost, the annual cost, and what it will cost over a five-year contract. So after careful consideration of each of the proposals, as well as demos from Casell and Tyler Technology, our team suggests that we go forward with the proposal to work for the main financial HR system implementation with Casell. They have a solid package that covers most of the needs for the finance HR system. The references we contacted about Casell were very informative, and they gave us a solid recommendation based on their usage of the system and the support that they received from Casell when they ran into problems. There were modules requested in the RFP that Casell doesn't cover or fell short of expectations that need to be addressed. For the maintenance module, Casell does not offer one, so we recommend with going with Dude Solutions, that was the facilities management-only proposal. As very comprehensive maintenance solution. The module fell short of the expectations of the timekeeping and the time sheet solution. We're currently reviewing options for a third party solution that was recommended by the Shutes County. We'll make recommendations on that as soon as we have, give appropriate information to do so. So we'd like to proceed with the next steps in the RFP process with Casell and Dude Solutions, which other, the next step would be contract negotiations and development work with finalists.
They'd have to work together, wouldn't they, the two companies?
Yeah, so the idea is be able to integrate the facilities management into the HR and financial package solution. Yes, they would have to, that's working together.
There's not going to be any issues with proprietary information or anything like that?
According to the RFPs, you know they're able to export information from the one system and be able to work on getting it into a format that the other system would be able to read. And that actually goes along with the time sheet system and the demo, or not the demo, the person that we talked to from someone recommended by the shoots said that they shouldn't have any issues being able to export their data either out of their system and into the financial software. So, like I said, when we have more information on the time sheet part of it, we'll make recommendations on that. But she will also need to work with and integrate into the financial and HR package.
Follow-up. Continue, Jack, Chair, Riley. We looked at both the two top candidates for the complete system for Tyler and Casell, and multiple, a lot of the cities around here in our county are using Casell, and then there's various counties that use it, too, in the state. The Shutes County uses Tyler Technology, the other competitor that we looked at, too, and both of them were lacking in the time sheet section, so that's why the shoots, even the competitor that, from what we chose, went with a separate time sheeting system, so they don't even use Tyler's. So they didn't meet the requirements either like Casell there, too. The same went with the facility maintenance. The Tyler had a partial system, but not a full system, and Casell didn't do that either. But as Riley says, they put things into formats and they're willing to work with each other so we can import and export things between the different systems, and they're currently doing that in other, with other clients that both of these companies have.
So follow up on both those questions and comments. So the way I understand this then is Casell and Dude Solutions, can they interface and create a common dashboard then?
They should be able to interface with each other, and so the information for the finance people should end up being on the financial side and the information that the maintenance people need, will stay, you know, they'll have a dashboard that they're able to use, but also be able to integrate the information in from the financial side, is my understanding.
So it would not be a common dashboard, because they're two different systems?
Right. But the information that they needed would go across.
But finance does not need to see the maintenance tickets and preventive maintenance scheduling and all of those things. They just need to know what the costs are on the projects.
So I guess my question is, so to share cost information, we go back to the old system of just tanning in invoices? Or how does that read each other? If you have a separate?
There would be probably a software interface. Looking at the proposals, there should be a software interface that allows the data to be transferred from one system to the other, so they'll be able to pop that forward, but they, they're still two separate systems, okay? So it wouldn't be doubling the work, it'll be the maintenance people will enter their information, that information will be passed on to the financial system for what the financial system requires.
So the answer to the question is, we are eliminating the physical transfer of invoices and that type of information so that Robert's Department will receive that real-time information electronically?
Yes, that is the idea.
Okay. Okay, no, thank you.
Commissioner Schaefer?
No, I had my question answered. So with that, Mr. Chair, I'd approve of we award the contractor software for financial management and human resource systems to Casell and for facilities management to Dude Solutions.
Second.
All right, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now we'll move into the final item on our agenda.
Thank you.
On August 11th, 2021, the Board of Commissioners reestablished the declaration of emergency in Yumitilla County due to the COVID pandemic. On August 12th, the following day, the Marl County Board of Commissioners declared a local state of emergency in Marl County, similar to that in Yumitilla County. Due to overlapping workforce and economies, similar rises in cases, and the sharing of medical services, it would be desirous for the two counties to coordinate their responses to the COVID emergence. And I would recommend that we enter into this informal agreement with Marl County.
Second.
All right, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you. Commissioner Reports.
I'll defer to Commissioner Dorn.
I have none this week, other than again to thank the Yumitilla County Fair Board and the management.
Yeah, the fair, it was so nice to actually be back in person with the fair, see so many faces, smiling faces. It was very well attended, I thought. Friday and Saturday seemed pretty packed, and I think it was, you know, we had a good presence on the grounds, and I appreciated it, so, thank you.
Just to report, just to update you on the current status of masks, I spoke with the ESD Superintendent yesterday afternoon. He indicated to me that all school districts in Yumitilla County are intending to comply with a mask mandate. As you're aware, that's been somewhat contentious around certain areas, but all of the districts in our county are intending to comply with the mask mandate. I've also started to receive additional communication based on changes in conditions elsewhere in Oregon. The soccer teams, I believe, they're Timbers, is that right? In Portland, have now required additional status related to vaccinations and masks, and our colleagues in Benton County have imposed a mask-wearing mandate for not just the Oregon State Beaver home games, but also their football games. So I want you to be aware of that. Okay? Questions? All right. We're adjourned.